All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's call this meeting to order. Can I get a motion, please, for the adoption of the agenda for the November 5th, 2019, regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Council Schonard will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing not all those in favor, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, the minutes of the October 15th, 2019, regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Council Wilkinson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing not all those in favor, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, the minutes of the October 15th, 2019, organizational meeting of council be adopted as presented? Council Byer will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing not all those in favor, motion carried. We have no public hearings, no delegations, no reading of bylaws. Moving on to reports from administration. Can I get a motion, please, that council require the developer, lawyer, head corp to conduct an open house at their own expense, meeting or exceeding the town criteria for hosting an open house as outlined in the report? Council Sorenson will make that motion, and we have our general manager of planning and infrastructure services here, Martino Verhege, who will speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. The report before you is a request for direction from council to administration. Essentially, there is a process that we're going through right now with the developer who's looking to acquire an area which has already been planned for subdivision, and there is currently an area structure plan as well as a subdivision which has been proposed on that area. So it's known as the Anderson subdivision area. Currently, we are looking at this southern portion. The developer's gone through his land assembly. He's considering the sale of his portion of that interest to the lawyer developments, which is a combination of residential and social aspects. The majority of the lawyer proposal would occur on the northern end. However, the southern end is what we're dealing with right now, which is a proposal for an area structure plan, land use bylaw amendment, as well as a alteration or adjustment and approval of a subdivision servicing and eventually development permits for manufactured homes. The development which was approved already by the town is for duplex developments. And so, given the change in residential use, even though there is associated similar residential uses nearby, and the densities are relatively similar, it is going up to 33 lots. We don't see any servicing-related issues. However, the initial changes and approvals for this proposal require council authorization. So prior to moving that forward to council, our request to council is to gain information as to whether the developer should be undertaking an open house to the public to garner information in advance of a public hearing. The reason we would want to request this type of a public discourse is because changes to the development are difficult to do once the bylaw is in front of council, because it requires different motions, agreements, likely re-advertising. It can, in fact, delay the process quite a bit. This allows the developer to see whether there is public support, neutrality, or opposition, and that provides information to council as well. Given your adoption of your consultation policy, which directs us to seek public input where it's most effective, we would note that, once council's approved the area structure plan and land use bylaw, should that occur, there's really no other appeal processes for the public. So really, the decision on this development, should it go forward with the changes that are proposed, would be essentially sitting on council with regards to the readings of the bylaw. It is not a requirement of the law, and we don't have any other policy other than the public consultation policy that's guiding us. So with this, we have provided for options to council to direct the developer to undertake the open house, which we would still support as a neutral participant and observer and provide public information generally. Or the town could undertake one. That would be then at the cost of the planning department. The complication with that is that we could not speak positively or negatively to the development. So it really minimizes the developer's ability to sell his project and gain public support. But that can be undertaken. Or not to do one. If council does not feel that's necessary at this time, we can proceed with the first reading bylaw in a prompt fashion and bring that before you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Verhege. I'll open the floor to questions or comments. Council Sorenson.
Through the chair to administration, just to be clear, the current plan is for 33 lots and the proposed plan is for 33 lots, or is it denser lots?
Mr. Chairman, through to Council Sorenson. The density is actually increasing. I'm going to find the actual map here for you. So they're going from approximately 30 lots to 33. It's a very minimal increase. There is some adjustment to the municipal reserve, public utility, and that type of stuff, but really nothing significant with regards to density.
Go ahead. I think, if I may add to that, the density is not an administrative concern. It's more the change in the character of the housing units and the use that is associated with that that we feel may be of interest to the public.
Can I just have a follow-up?
Sure. Go ahead.
Through the chair. But if it was previously a duplex, there would theoretically be 60 families, and now we're proposing 33 families. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, through to Council Sorenson. Based on the actual lot sizes, it would probably be that they would be best described actually as semi-detached. Because this would be half of a duplex, this would be half.
Each lot would only have half of the property on it. So the density will be pretty much the same.
Okay, thank you very much.
Council Schonard.
Actually, through, I guess, to engineering plan, I'm trying to think of your name, but I don't think it's right. But yeah, no, I see the need for it, but the reason for the open house, if the public objects to this, the only opportunity they would have is during an open house. Is that correct?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, through Council Schonard and council, there is the legal requirement that in between first and second reading, we would entertain an open house and advertise as such. However, in my experience, it's very problematic if you have a development that might have a negative response from the public, where 50 people show up and then have that response. It will happen in contentious developments, should this one be contentious. However, it's best for the developer not to be surprised when they could easily remedy an issue. And it's also good for council to have that prior information in case it's relevant for you prepare for that.
Or on the other side of the token, or if there's lots of support for the development. Go ahead, Council Wilkinson.
Through the chair to administration. I think we've discussed this before, I mean, last council even, about this proposed development. At the time, I even thought then that it was like mobile homes up there. So the public has had a lot of chance to think about this and talk about it, and have we had any complaints from people about the proposed development?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, through Council Wilkinson. We got the formal application approximately a month to a month and a half ago. So the department does not recognize that a development's proceeding until we have something that's formal. Otherwise, we would have a lot of, you know, pro and con discussions with public about what are currently just concepts. We do require formal applications in order to bring things forward. Otherwise, we would deal with a lot of different factors.
Did we not, like, redevelop land and switch some land around in the bottom of this prior? Two years ago, three years ago? In preparation for this?
We changed road allowances to line them up. But the proposal was for duplexes, not mobile homes.
Yes, I realize that, but there was definitely a proposal for something there. I was just asking then. The town has had no input on any complaints.
Yeah, so, thank you. So I think, again, to characterize this, the overall character of the development in terms of servicing, roadways, is changing very minimally. It's really just that character of the housing changing from semi-detached duplex homes to mobile homes. That question has never, to my knowledge, been specifically presented or asked of the public, because it was zoned specifically as duplex lots. And so I think the interest there is simply to say to the public, if they have any concerns, support, questions about a change from what a semi-detached development looks like to that homeowner-owned mobile home lots, which is kind of the intent of the proposed changes.
One more question, please.
We have Council Curry will get back to you.
I am in support of the open house and the developer doing that. I have had a few people contact me with some concerns, both on both ends. So I do think that it is important that, because I do agree that this is a change, and so I think it's just before it comes to us, and I think that will prevent the developer from having to do extra work by just doing it that way in the first place. So I support this.
Okay, Council Schonard, and then Council Byer, and then Council Wilkinson.
Okay, through engineering planning, since some of the work is, because I'm understanding, like, probably timing is in essence, if they're move ahead and it's springtime, they go on to get under construction. With some of the work being done, so, I don't know if it would be a redevelopment or a change of development. So if they did an open house and they proposed mobiles versus duplexes, would that help the developer speed it up? Because some of the groundwork's been done, we've advertised development, and if they did the open house, I believe that would be positive, negative. With the open house, a lot of people want it, hopefully they'll show up. And if anyone in the neighborhood is against it, because there is a modular home park close by, but not directly across, so I'm just wondering, with the groundwork, would that speed it up any?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, through Council Schonard. What I can say is that the open house process, and one of the reasons we brought it here quite promptly, was, would not really delay the application anymore. They would easily be able to have an answer and have all of their formal approvals in place by, before the spring, before the winter ends, is easily achievable, in my experience. There are other parties as well involved, so there's some moving parts that don't involve us, but I don't see a reason from a process perspective. We can't keep moving the things forward while they work out there. Land ownership issues.
Council Byer and Council Wilkinson.
Through the chair to administration, I am in support of having an open house on this. I think that it goes along with our lines of being transparent and open to communicate with our public, and if they have questions or concerns, or if they're neutral, that's an opportunity to find out about it, as you mentioned. And if there are any issues, then I think it's a great time for the developer to understand what those are and to remedy them before proceeding.
All right, thank you. Council Wilkinson, and then Council Sorenson.
Just my one question was, is this going to hold up the project, an open house? And you've reassured us, no. Okay, thank you.
We've recently had a conversation with the developers, clarifying what timeframes would be involved.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Council Sorenson.
Kind of a two-part question, through the chair to administration. How do we ensure that the comments received during a private open house comes back to council?
Mr. Chairman, through to Council Sorenson. This is one of the reasons why I would either attend, or I'd be instructing my professional staff to attend and assist in part with the open house. We would be a neutral participant in the sense that we provide the existing policies of council and provide just general information, which is not biasing anything with regards to the application itself. But the other part of that is, we then also are now an observer, and we have the ability to write in actual sections. Quite commonly, we would write in sections into an area structure plan that note, there was no open house on this date, this many people attended, this was generally the response. And that, in many cases, can be written right into the policy as an observation piece. But either way, staff would bring that as a kind of neutral piece of information for council to consider.
If I may, second question, through the chair. At what point in the process to approval do restrictive covenants, are they considered? So on the ages of the modular homes, sizes, colors, materials?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, through to Council Sorenson. That authority for restrictive covenants falls within the Land Titles Act, which isn't something that we directly would use to govern. So the private developer could choose to place those restrictive covenants on. They would usually put that with the registration, so whenever they registered subdivision, they would usually register a restrictive covenant that met with their interests as the developer. And we would generally stay out of that unless there was restrictive reasons for drainage or other infrastructure functions. However, we do, of course, have land use authority, so it can be written directly into the area structure plan that we disallow certain things. My suggestion, however, would be that if we do proceed with that in the area structure plan, we would then also put that into a corresponding land use bylaw change, in the sense that we should be treating newly developed manufactured homes similarly throughout the community as a general note, but specifically, our authority rests in the development permit, which should reflect the land use bylaw. So if we chose to become involved in that, we would want to consider that in the context of our land use bylaw.
May I, may I? I have a question for Mr. Verhege.
Through the chair, please.
I'm certainly asked for your grace, if I can. Is that something that can be done as part of a development agreement in terms of requiring a restrictive covenant that would satisfy any town issues there?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, we could. If we chose to do so, we would be then enforcing it as a civil matter, though, versus a governance issue. Most of our systems are set up to relate to those development appeals boards and other governance structures, but we always have the ability to act as a person, and so we could act in a civil matter through agreement.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Council Schonard.
Actually, through the engineering planning, but where we talked about the modular homes were restriction, wouldn't that be similar if somebody built a house, let's say, in Hillendale, where, you know, our new subdivision, there'd be certain restrictions, because the last thing we want, and I'm sure the developer wouldn't, if all of a sudden all the mobile homes started moving in there. So we'd have some control over what it should look like.
If I may, I think I'll take that one. So the difference there in Hillendale is that we are acting as the developer, and so we have put the restrictive covenant on from the perspective of developer protecting the integrity of our development, not in terms of the governing jurisdiction requiring that. So the mechanism will look different in terms of requiring that from an outside developer of that same act, which is why I asked the question of what of our mechanisms that may be available to us to require a restrictive covenant that would be of interest to the town? And it sounds like there's a few different ways that we can address that, either through the land use bylaw or through some agreements that could be considered.
And, point of information, sir, just as a note, one thing I didn't think of, but would also advise council and the CIO of, is that as subdivision approving authority, we also have the ability to implement conditions which could include registrations. Again, that could be appealed to the appeals board, but that's the process, but we could put that on as a requirement as well.
Any other further questions, comments, or concerns? I'll just make a comment that I think it's really good to have the open house up front to address any issues that may arise, also to maybe help garner support before it comes to council. It's often very difficult, once we have a bylaw in front of us, to kind of make changes and change directions on things, and really puts the developer in a bad position and council in a bad position. So I'd like to see that happen, and hopefully work with a developer to ensure that due process takes place as quickly as possible. So I'm in support of this and look forward to seeing what the public has to say. So without any further commentary, I'll call the question. All those in favor, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council set a reserve bid for each of the properties scheduled for the tax sale on November 26, 2019, as listed? Council Byer will make that motion, and we have our general manager of corporate services, Sarah Bittner, with us to talk about this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few weeks ago, I walked council the, or the request for decision to set our tax sale for 2019. That was to be happening on November the 26th. I now bring you the properties we have going to that sale, and now council needs to set the reserve bids for those properties. We've done this in consultation with our assessor, Aaron Steblig, to come up with these fair market values for these properties.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Go ahead, Council Wilkinson.
Through the chair. The last one definitely interests me. What will it cost us if we have to remove a mobile home from some, is that any idea on the cost?
Through the chair to Council Wilkinson, I don't have those with me. I can certainly find that out for you, though.
Probably over, more than it's valued.
Yes. Just as a matter of interest, if these go to tax sale, we still are working with owners to come up.
Good.
We always do 20 very last moment. And it does not sell, council, the MGA states that council may take possession of that. You don't have to, you must take possession of that. So just keep that in mind as well.
All right, Council Schonard, you had your hand up.
Yeah, no, my question was similar, because when you get to the bottom one at 20,000, it's not much. But I think in our past history, very few actually resell. Most of the time, there's an arrangement made, because you have the value of 73,000. Somebody's going to take ownership on the tax bill, because it's probably not 73,000.
No, that's the value of it.
No, but that's what I'm saying, like, I don't know what the value is, but with something worth 73,000, someone's going to pay up, because their deadline is when?
Through the chair to Council Schonard, they have right up until the moment we start the sale.
Oh, okay.
To come and pay the arrears that are owing on those properties. And our finance department works with the owners as much as they can right up to date point as well.
Council Sorenson.
Through the chair, I was just going to comment on Council Wilkinson's question. It's about $3,000 to $5,000 to move a trailer. It really depends on how far you move it and where the destination is. And in this case, they'd probably just sell it where it is. It probably could be the most valid.
And you think it would sell?
I don't know what the trailer looked like.
No, okay. No, that's hopeful.
All right, thank you. This is actually quite a small list, from what I recall from previous years, so that's a good thing. And I do know that usually, the day before the tax sale, most of this is already dealt with, so. So I'll call the question. All those in favor, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council, in accordance with Alberta Regulation Number 281, grant the Core Childcare Society property located at Plan 33464 AC, Block 5, Lots 2 to 4, tax exemption, status effective the 2020 tax year, and be allowed this exemption for a maximum of three consecutive taxation years, 2020 to 2022 inclusive? Council Schonard will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Council Schonard.
Just to be clear, that's the one in behind tags, cracked over on 50?
No, Third Avenue.
New one on Third.
But there, I guess my question is, then they're a nonprofit, then?
Yes.
Okay, so that's new, and that's why not recognizing the name of the block, so that's new and starting, and they're going to be similar to one of their nonprofit, then?
Through the chair, that is correct, yes.
Council Byer.
Through the chair to administration, Sarah, I guess. Do we have a list of how many property tax exemptions that we give, and when they expire, and what that value is each year?
Through the chair to Council Byer. You'll notice the ones past this, there's actually four that are renewals. We're trying to actually get them on that same three-year schedule. The ones that we're aware of are these ones here, plus the golf course also has an exemption as well. As far as we know, they are the ones that we have at the moment. These are the four, and the golf course have been in effect for a while. This core one that we're looking at right now, that is their first year for their application.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Council Sorenson.
So through the chair to administration, I'm just trying to understand the MGA on this point. So it's a maximum of three consecutive taxation years, but it can be renewed indefinitely?
Through the chair to Council Sorenson, it can renew to a maximum of three years. So every three years, they must reapply for that exemption. I think that's to ensure that if the usage of that property has changed, we're able to catch that without it going into a purity into the future of not being taxed if the usage had changed on those properties.
Any other questions? My understanding, under the MGA, we don't really have a choice in this matter, so, which is kind of silly that this has to come up, but I do have a question, but that's okay, we'll ask it some other time. I'm good. I'll call the question. All those in favor.
I'm curious.
All those opposed, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council, in accordance with Alberta Regulation Number 281, grant the Daycare Society of Edson property located at Plan 461 AJ, Block 160, Lots 18 to 20, tax exemption status effective the 2020 tax year, and be allowed this exemption for a maximum of three consecutive taxation years, 2020 to 2022 inclusive? Council Curry will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing not all those in favor, motion carried.
Since you told us we're forced to respond.
Can I get a motion, please, that council, in accordance with the Alberta Regulation Number 281, grant the Lions Club of Edson property located at Plan 4200 MC, Block 1, Lot 6, tax exemption status effective the 2020 tax year, and be allowed this exemption for a maximum of three consecutive taxation years, 2020 to 2022 inclusive? Council Wilkinson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing not all those in favor, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council, in accordance with the Alberta Regulation Number 281, grant McMahon Youth, Family, and Community Services Association a property located at Plan 1494 AC, Block 5, Lots 13 to 17, tax exemption status effective the 2020 tax year, and be allowed this exemption for a maximum of three consecutive taxation years, 2020 to 2020 inclusive, 2022 inclusive? Council Sorenson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor, motion carried.
Your voice is really kind of...
Can I get a motion, please, that council, in accordance with Alberta Regulation Number 281, grant the Association Supporting Choices of People, Edson Scope, properties located at Plan 972, 2693, Block 47A, Lot 5, and Plan 7720071, Block 83, Lot 36, tax exemption status effective the 2020 tax year, and be allowed this exemption for a maximum of three consecutive taxation years, 2020 to 2022 inclusive? Councilor Byer will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Council Schonard?
Did you possibly repeat that?
I'll call the question. All those in favor, motion carried. Thank you, Council Schonard. Information items? We have none, no summary. Moving on to council committee reports, and we are going back to October 15th, and today we will start with Council Wilkinson.
Okay, October 16th, I had a site visit at Parkland Lodge. It's really, really coming along very well. On the 19th, we had the budget workshop here on Saturday. October 29th, the task force met with the Friendship Center regarding homelessness. October 30th, another site visit. October 31st, I had a conference call with ASHA. I'm on now, since the election, I'm on the nominating committee, so that's what we discuss.
Thank you, Council Wilkinson. Council Schonard.
Okay, on October 19th, we had our budget workshop. On October 22nd was our CAL meeting, and October 31st, I had the TransCanada, so the TY or TCYH, we had a meeting. It was a lobbying meeting with the city of Edmonton to get them back on in other big cities. And we also are looking to the Alberta government, other parties, so we can carry this thing on to make it bigger, better. And then November 1st, the next day, should stay overnight, but we had a regular meeting, and our highlights there is they're doing their 50th anniversary, so when we get closer to the dates, we're encouraging all the towns, including the town of Edson, we will advertise what is going on, so we'll gain for tourism. And the other thing that I'm working towards abroad too is, like, our concerns of going through wherever Highway 16 travels through town, so cleaning of the roads, most importantly, paving, so we're going to lobby the Alberta government, it is your highway, let's especially, you know, keep up the caribou, grass cutting maintenance, so we have support for that. And we have other meetings, and some of the other stuff I don't want to disclose yet, because we're working on, we're working on some big stuff. And that's it for my report.
All right, Council Byer.
Okay, on October 16th, I had an Edson library board meeting, and we're still working on our plan of service. We've had over 200 questionnaires and surveys received, so we're pretty, really, really happy about those results. And October 19th, the budget workshop. October 29th, the meeting with the homelessness task force with the Edson Friendship Center. And November 4th, youth council meeting. And that was really great. We had a lot of brainstorming of topics of interest. We had a lot of brainstorming of topics of interest and had some really good discussion about, uh, kind of, maybe where they want to work, what, what they want to work on over the next year.
All right, thank you. Councillor Curry?
Okay, on October nineteenth, I also had the budget workshop. And then on the twenty-ninth, I also had the task force meeting at Friendship Center.
Thank you, councillor Sorensen.
On October nineteenth, I was, I attended the budget workshop, and November fourth, I was at the youth council, and I'll just give, uh, a little update on what was discussed. Last year, youth council more or less focused on one major project for the year. They had some side projects, but they really focused on one major one, and that was the plastic ban, uh, bag ban or taxi taxes. And, uh, so this year, we're, we're encouraging them again to focus on something so that they can really sink their teeth into it and get some, uh, get some actions done. And this year, they, they've, um, decided to focus, again, on continuing the work that was done last year on the plastic bag ban, uh, proceed that forward to more solid proposal. And then they also would like to work on environmental awareness or recycling awareness in the community, so more, um, just, just awareness. So doing events in the community that, uh, makes people think and gets people together talking about environmental issues. Uh, they also had some questions about dog park and multiplex, so it was great to see their concerns and hear their questions.
All right, um, we, uh, councillor Curry and Sorensen, you missed the recycling contract negotiating committee meeting on October sixteenth. Progress, oh yeah, you missed that one, never mind. Uh, progress is being made on that. So we will be meeting with EDRS here shortly and hopefully have something to bring to council fairly soon. October eighteenth, I attended the Northern Alberta Mayor's and Reeves Caucus event on Inok Cree Nation. Um, this is the first time we've met on, uh, First Nations Reserve, and that was a first meeting ever with Northern Mayor's and Chiefs, uh, with a focus on reconciliation and, uh, collaboration. We were joined by the Alberta Minister of Indigenous Relations, as well as the Municipal Affairs Minister. Chief Wilton Littlechild was there. He was the Chair of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Uh, he was also the first U of A grad, uh, from law school at the U of A of Aboriginal descent. So he's very well respected, um, and, uh, gave, uh, really some, uh, moving commentary. It was called a historic event by the Chiefs, and the elder who gave the prayer in the morning spoke at the end of the meeting and, uh, made some pretty moving and touching comments about what she saw there that day. So, uh, that really was, uh, was great to see. There was, um, municipalities that have never talked to their First Nation neighbors that they were able to talk to them at this meeting, and they talked about some of the issues and got a better understanding. And, uh, one of the examples, uh, at the end of the meeting, um, the First Nation didn't understand why a certain municipality would lift its blade up when the plow was going through their nation, because their municipality continues on the other side, and automatically thought it was because of a racial slant or something like that. And was kind of explained, no, that's not our border, so we don't feel like we should be doing that, just like, um, the provincial government lifts their blade when they go across our municipal boundary, right? Um, so it was really, uh, good to have that dialogue, um, and I think it, uh, really, uh, brought people together, um, which, uh, now we're talking about doing this on an annual basis. So that was good to see. Attended the budget workshop on October nineteenth, and once again, thanks to all of council and, uh, all the staff involved in that. It was a really, uh, gruesome day of, uh, numbers, but we got through it and, uh, look forward to the open house on Thursday. Mental health, homelessness, and addiction task force, as mentioned. I met with the Friendship Center on October twenty-ninth. Uh, just an interesting stat for council's awareness, uh, seventy-one people were served by the homelessness project in the last three months in our community, uh, and most of those were males, um, uh, between the ages of around thirty and forty. Luckily, uh, no children, uh, were involved in that, uh, to date, so, uh, we had some, some really good discussion there. And then the youth council meeting, uh, on November fourth, and the only other thing I'd mention on that is the Mayor for the Day contest will be starting later this month. And, uh, we also had, uh, talked about our roads budget, uh, some questions about, uh, roads and, uh, particularly Highway sixteen, which is Alberta transportation's issue. But I asked a question, how much do you think we spend on roads each year? Went around the table, and the answers were anywhere from eighty thousand dollars a year to a million dollars, so they were quite shocked when I told them it was one point eight million dollars last year on, uh, operational spending on the road network. So they were like, wow! Yeah, so, uh, hopefully we'll see some of them at the budget open house. We've invited them, uh, on Thursday, so, uh, that's my report.
And sorry, I just got some data here on seniors housing, I'll put it on the table in the back.
Oh, perfect. All right, we have no financial items. Questions from media and public regarding items from this council meeting?
I actually just have a question about the lawyer proposal. Um, with regards to that, is the town funding a portion of it? Because I'm just wondering why you guys are getting all these questions from the public about the proposal?
Uh, we are not funding any, anything. It's on, it's all on the developer, but, uh, there was some communication put out on social media about this proposed development, um, and certain people have contacted some, some members of council about that.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
I'll talk for you.
All right, thanks for coming. Uh, I will take a motion to move into camera to review, review library board member applications under FOIPAC Section seventeen, one and four F and nineteen one. Councillor Byer will make that motion. Call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Councillor Byer, if you want to make a motion, please.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, move that council appoint Mrs. Susan Groat, um, Town of Edson, Ms. Bonnie Watson of Town of Edson, and Ms. Debbie Burgess, also Town of Edson, to the libraries, to the Edson Library Board.
All right, thank you, uh, councillor Byer, and that is for a term expiring November twenty twenty-two for each one of those, correct?
Correct.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Motion for German. Councillor Sharnard, all those in favor?